This is the regular meeting of the Mobile City Council, Tuesday, June 20th. Please stand for invocation led by Dr. Lydell Cleveland, New Bayside Baptist Church, and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence following the pledge.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Let's bow our heads. Eternal God, we are grateful today for another opportunity to come before you. We first thank you for just waking us up today. We ask you, O God, for your grace and your mercy over the former city employees, families, where lost loved ones, and then we pray for this council, the mayor and his staff. And we pray for our first responders and our policemen. And, oh God, we ask for a special grace over this city as we deal with the violence that's in our community. Lord, we thank you for governing by it. We thank you, O Lord, for sound mind. And God, let your grace prevail today in the name of Jesus, I pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in its standing. One nation, under God, in the best of all.
If you would, please remain standing for a moment of silence. I'm going to ask Councilman Manzi to provide us some information on one gentleman who passed recently, Mr. Bobo White.
Yes, Mr. Thomas Bobo White, longtime resident of the Downey Bay area of District Two, mentor, father figure to many, active in many social and community-minded organizations. Family very prominent either down the bay or in the Mobile area in general. Passed and his funeral was this past Saturday at the St. Monica's, St. Matthews Catholic Church. I ask that you keep his wife Sheila, his family, and all those who were directly connected to him in your prayers.
And also, we want to remember the family of Jay Higginbotham for all longtime city employees. The name of Jay Higginbotham should be very familiar. Jay was a longtime city employee. He was a historian, archivist, very involved in the Sister Cities program, really helped get that program set up, visited Havana, Cuba on just a number of occasions. He was a great guy and a wonderful historian and was able to tell you anything about Mobile that you ever wanted to know. So we want to remember both of these gentlemen in a moment of silent prayer in your own way, please.
Here.
Vice President Richardson.
Here.
Councilmember Manzi.
Here.
Councilmember Small.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Dave.
Here.
Councilmember Rich.
Here.
Statement of rules.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Good to see a bit of a crowd, even with all of this awful weather we've been having. The mayor is in Paris. He's at the airshow there. He is helping to recruit more aerospace companies for our city, and we look forward to hearing more from him when he comes back. I know he's already been on the phone with some of the media, so I've heard some of those reports, but we will look forward to hearing a full report upon his return. Today, we have some special guests in the audience. I want to introduce some people who are here from Africa Town. There is a big 5K run walk coming up this weekend, and if Michael Mitchell would come to the podium and provide us with that information, I would appreciate it. And I know you've got some guests who are with you, so why don't you come on down? I hope the rain holds off. It looks like by Friday, things should be clearing up so we can go do this run walk.
My name is Michael Mitchell. I have my son with me, Chris. I'm Mr. Cleon Jones of Africa Town and Mr. Allen Rens for Arc Terminals. Arc Terminals will be our sponsor for the 5K run that we have coming on, June 24th is upcoming Saturday. Registration is available up until 7:26 that day. You can pay $25 interest fee then. If you'd like to, you can register online before time, basically now would be a good point, well, we leave here. Eventbrite.com and Little Red Hand Productions. Basically, the proceeds for the 5K run goes to our program on behalf of the Community Gardens to build up to our marketplace.
Where do you go to begin the race on race day?
Yes, to begin the race, basically that same property where the community center is, right there. Old Platinum Cemetery.
Okay. Anything else you want to add, Mr. Jones? Good to see you here.
Good to be here.
Why don't you come up to the podium?
No, behave with dignity.
Either way.
I'm Allen Rens with Arc Terminals, and we're just, we're happy to be not only the title sponsor, but what we've been developing with the community, not just Arc Terminals, but the industry in Mobile through these groups that we've started, these nonprofit organizations. So this is going to be the first year for the race. I hope to see all you guys out there Saturday. I don't know if Michael mentioned, but you can see on the website, it's going to be entertainment, food trucks from Mobile out there. We'll be giving away little handouts and whatnot, so we invite not only you, but your families, friends, everyone you want to invite, tell them about it Saturday. Rain or shine, hopefully no lightning, but it will be ran in the rain.
So it is, the official name is the Africa Town 5K Walk Run?
Challenge.
Challenge. And for a lot of us, it would be a challenge even walking it. I understand that.
And if there's a JPG, we could put it in our newsletters and get it out to the community if you'll send it to the city clerk's office. Perfect.
That would be great. Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Yes, good morning, everyone.
Morning.
When you get my age, it's good to be anywhere, anywhere, to speak to anyone or to listen to anyone. You know, Africa Town now, as I see it, is on the rise. It's some, it's a place that should have been recognized and will be recognized in the future. But I want to thank all of you guys for what you're doing to pitch in to make this possible. But I want to give special thanks to my councilperson, Mr. Manzi, for all he has done to make these things happen in a way that reflects both the city and the community. Now, I'm not saying that we are split from the community. We are part of the community, community, but we want to be a vital part of the community because we see ourselves as a link to tourism in this area, and we are striving to be a New Orleans, to be a Charleston as it relates to tourism. So with your help, I think we can make all that possible. Thanks for having us.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate you coming. Madam President. Mr. Richardson?
It's on to ask Michael.
Go ahead.
You started.
Okay. I was going to ask Mike about the route. Are you, are you going to take the runners over the Africa Town Bridge?
Yes, sir.
How you think we're going to get over that bridge, brother?
Twice. Because this is the first time that a race has gone over that bridge, correct?
Correct.
So, so this will be a unique opportunity for any of the runners in the area to do something they've never been able to do before, so that's, that's terrific.
Oh, it is. It is, yes.
I was wondering, but that's, that's a tall bridge.
Mr. Manzi?
All 3.104 miles.
Yeah.
Wow.
Well, I just want to commend this great group for all of their hard work. It has been a joy working with them because they're organized and they have a mission. And when you're organized and mission-focused, you can make things happen, and this Africa Town community is a great example of that. Mr. Jones, Mr. Mitchell, Ms. Jones, Mike, all of the community industry partners. Now, this is one of the first times that industry and community has come together in a harmonious fashion. Normally, it's full of acrimony and it's, it's full of dissension, and they're trying to bridge that gap because they're finally, I think they've come to the realization that some level of industry will be there, some level of residential density will be there, so let's work together for the good of the community, and they're doing that. And so I'm encouraging all of our runners to come out. This is a unique opportunity to run or walk across the Africa Town Bridge. I'm not, I'm going to tell you right now, I do not accept a challenge. I'm going to be there, I'm going to be passing out water to those who do accept the challenge. But I'm happy that you all are doing this. This is the inaugural attempt, and I'm hopeful that this is something that you all continue for many years to come. Keep up the good work.
Thank you very much.
Madam President.
Mr. Small.
Also, I would like to say to Arc Terminals, you know, thank you so much for investing to that community. I know it has been a history there, but thank you for ensuring that you are willing to work with the community and everything. Thank you.
Madam President. The mic's loud over here today.
Mr. Williams.
I will, but Miss, I want everybody to note that Mr. Manzi said that everyone that accepted a challenge that he would hand them water, so I'll be looking for Mr. Manzi to hand me some water in this race.
You got it.
I will be there, and I'll, I'll get across.
All right.
We may have to push him, but. Mr. Jones, you?
Yeah, I'd just like to add, on next year, hopefully, we've talked about this before, we would have lighting to light up that bridge to make that historic area more significant as it relates to the city.
That would be great. Thank you again for coming. Appreciate it. We mentioned earlier that we have some weather brewing in the area in the Gulf, and we are keeping close tabs on the weather throughout the city. So far, it looks like all we will receive is a lot of rain, but with that, you know that the ground is already very saturated, so any extra rain over these next couple of days is likely to cause some flooding issues. So the city of Mobile and the police department will be issuing some alerts and safety tips just to remind everyone about the dangers of trying to drive through these flooded areas. So just be on the lookout for that, and of course, our media folks are putting out information as they get it. So just stay tuned and be weather alert, and then to, of course, stay safe. We want to also tell you about Feeding the Gulf Coast. That's going on. Some meals for children at all of our community centers. The city is partnering with Feeding the Gulf Coast. They're providing meals for our children who during the summer months might otherwise go hungry. These meals are free of charge at every community center in the city as well as some other alternate locations. So if you're in the neighborhoods of Dodge and Figures, Harmon Thomas, Hillsdale, James Seals, Rickery, Lawn, Spring Hill, Hope, Thomas Sullivan, and New House Park, meals will be provided there. But again, there are also some alternate locations at churches and other areas. If you need more information about which center is closest to you, you can check out Feeding the Gulf Coast website or text 877-877, and they will provide you with the information. Of course, we will have that here in our office as well, so feel free to give us a call at our council office. We've got movies coming up this summer, summertime, people looking for something to do, and the police department and our special events department are putting on movies under the stars this summer at our parks. The first one was June 14th at James Seals, but the next one is coming up in my district at District Seven in Langen Park, so we ask everyone to bring your lawn chairs, your blankets, picnics, and just come on out and enjoy some movies with your family under the stars. Following the one at Langen Park, we will be at Theodore on July 12th, and then Tricentennial on July 26th, with the last one Medal of Honor on August 5th. And again, this next one will be on June 28th at Langen Park. This past Sunday, the Distinguished Young Women arrived in Mobile. This is their 60th year for the program. The DYW, as you know, combines scholarships, and the program offers life skills training to prepare these young women for their life after high school. Each year, more than $1 billion is provided in scholarships for these young women, and it costs nothing to enter a program. So if you see these young women and their families around town, please say hello to them and welcome them to the city. The national finals will be held on June 29th, 30th, and 30th, and July 1st, and it will be at the Civic Center, and tickets are still available for the Distinguished Young Women, and I'm sure we will be hearing from them here at the council before the finals take place. They always come to visit us. The rules of the council are very simple. We ask everyone to please turn off all of your electronic devices. If you come to the podium to speak, you'll have five minutes. At the end of four minutes, you'll hear the buzzer, and that's your indication to begin wrapping up your comments. If you have questions or concerns, please address those to me. I am the chair, and we will try to get that resolved for you at that time, someone on the administration side or council member. So again, we just welcome everyone here this morning. Thank you. Ms. Samberg, why don't you go ahead?
Approval of minutes from June 13th. So move.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Communications from the mayor's office.
Okay.
Adoption of the agenda.
So move.
Discussion, all in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Appeals. We have requests for waiver of the noise ordinance on July 6th, 7th, and 8th on Donald Street, July 4th on Charles Street, July 22nd on Canal Street, July 15th on Dolphin Street between Jackson and Joakim Streets, July 16th on Halls Mill Road, July 1st on North Cody Road, July 1st and 2nd on Burtonwood Drive.
Okay. These are appeals of the noise ordinance. I know we have one gentleman, probably a couple of others, who are here to speak to one particular noise ordinance. So I'm going to call on Mr. Kalinsky Adams if he would come to the podium. He was signed in to speak under petitions and presentations to the council, so we're going to ask you if you wouldn't mind just coming on up now since your appeal is coming up. And if there's anyone else here in the audience who wanted to speak to any of these appeals, just let us know, and we'll have you come down once Mr. Kalinsky and his group finishes.
Madam President.
Mr. Dave.
Point order. The clerk read out all of these appeals together, and I'm just, I'm concerned, when we actually get to the voting, the, this one, this one on July 16th on Halls Mill Road, we probably need to handle that one separately.
I'll call it separate.
We'll call that one separately. So anyone in the audience who wanted to speak to this particular appeal will be welcome to come to the podium at that time to speak, okay?
Come on.
City council and everybody in the, in the row. All right. I'm here to present the agenda for the 10th Annual Alabama Hip-Hop Week.
Go ahead and introduce yourself. Give us your name and address for the record.
Well, my name is Kalinsky Adams, for, for Opportunity for Entertainment, but I'm also known as Dirty Dan from the big station, 93BLX, Cumulus Broadcasting. I first, I first want to say this, and I know, although that's a proper platform, but I wanted to say, when I first thought about creating Hip-Hop Week, I just thought about promoting the music, the culture, the, just the everything about entertainment. So I would think to do a week on seven blocks for seven days would be Hip-Hop Week. But what, everything that we do in the community, from, you know, clothes drives to helping the kids, seven days with a purpose, it means everything. So the first day of July 10th, it's a Monday, we're going to kick it off, we're going to do a hygiene drive for the, for the less fortunate, and we call it the Forgotten Ones Hygiene Drive. And the reason we, we do the community stuff first because this is what it's all about. It's all about community. It's all about bringing people together. So from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM, we'll be doing a hygiene drive. Our staging area will be on State Street, right next to the Golf Stadium Lodge. You know, for me, that particular day is my birthday, so it's a great honor to be able to serve people on my day of birth. Tuesday, we'll, we'll kick off Tuesday, we're going to do a picnic in the park, and it's going to happen at Municipal Park. Initially, we wanted to do it at Public Safety Park. I just thought it was a beautiful park to be at, but for safety reasons, we're going to move it to Municipal Park. So I went and seen the chief the other day, and he's not here right now, so Chief Barber, I got to challenge you to a kickball game. And I told chief, we're going to do a kickball game. It's the DJs versus the Mobile Police Department, and also kids versus adults. That particular day, we're going to do a dunk the DJ with the Dunkin' Boos, Spacewalks. It's just all about bringing community together. It's very important with so much going on in our city that we really unify our city. On Wednesday, we're not, we're not going to do nothing as far as an event, but what we're going to do, we set a challenge out to the Parks and Recreation Department. My understanding, we have over 89 parks and recreation centers. So I teamed up with, with Terrence Smith from Cass and the city of Mobile, and Corporal Young, and we sat down and we came up with an idea to get all the park and recreation centers to do a challenge, to do a painting that symbolizes their community. And once they submit it, they can make it a mirror into their park and recreation center. So we call it the Building the Community Through Art contest. Our goal is to get everybody involved, but we're going to have a top three, and we're going to honor them with like a pizza party, and do some stuff at their community recreation centers, and also display their artwork at the art walk on Friday. Thursday, which is July 13th, we're going to do pop-up shops at other businesses, kind of, a whole thing is to integrate businesses with each other so we can network and build business. So we teamed up with Kazzula on Dolphin Street and some other small businesses to spotlight artists, spotlight the art, fashion, and also networking on that Thursday. Friday, which we're not on the agenda for Friday as far as, one of the pieces of what we want to do on Friday. Five years ago, we started a relationship with the city and doing art walk, and for the city now, it's pretty much July is hip-hop month for art walk. We've been the soundtrack for the last five years, never had an issue, never had a problem. It's been great and it's been successful. So with this being the 10th year, our goal is to do a second line parade down Dolphin Street and to the art walk. And, you, you, council going to speak to it, speak about it a little bit? Okay. I want to speak about the art walk.
Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
Thank you all for having us. First of all, good morning to everyone here.
Could you give us your name?
Melvin Jones. My name is Melvin Jones. I'm the vice president of the Port City Second Liners, and we're also one of the co-sponsors for this year's Alabama Hip-Hop Week. And on Friday, like Mr. Adams was saying, normally the city has art walk, and what we want to do, we want to incorporate the arts in another form or fashion along with art walk. And if you all remember back in January with the blessings of Reverend Manzi and the rest of the councilmen in Mobile, we did the first second line parade down Dolphin Street. It was a great event, the whole, the whole idea was to unify the city, bring people out and have a good time. So we want to bring that same element here this Friday during Hip-Hop Week, and we also want to raise the platform as we're there about domestic violence. So the goal is going to be wear purple for pride, and we want to, we want to bring that awareness out along with, with bringing the second line parade through Dolphin Street onto the art walk. And like you said earlier, with the, of the paintings, or that was the idea we talked about, and what we want to do at the art walk is have those, have those paintings, displays so everyone can see the talents that a lot of our youth have in our community, and to also show that, you know, we have a lot of things going on behind the scenes and things that we're trying to do to beautify our city and our community.
Thank you. Mr. Adams, you mentioned Langen Park on Tuesday.
On Tuesday.
Are you still going to do that at Langen Park on Tuesday?
Yeah.
What time is that?
It's going to be from 2:00 PM to 6:00 PM.
Okay, 2:00 to 6:00.
Yeah, 2:00 to 6:00.
At the pavilion?
Okay, and we'll roll straight into Saturday. Saturday, the whole ambience is about driving people to our city. So we created a platform called Super Saturday, and with Super Saturday, we want to drive people to Dolphin Street downtown Mobile. When I talk to people all the time, I say, "Come to Mobile, come to Mobile." They say, "What's they doing in Mobile?" So we had to create the activity. For the last 10 years or nine years, every time people come to see our events or be a part of our events, when it's time for them to do more, they have to go to Pensacola for the beaches, they have to go to Mississippi for the casinos, and that's their, that's their activity outside of what we do. So Super Saturday is basically, we're doing a music conference with educating artists about copyrights publishing at a, 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 excite pool hall from 2:00 PM to 6:00 PM that day. We asked for the noise ordinance for that evening because we want to do a street party to drive people to have activity downtown Mobile from, from 6:00 PM to 10:00, 9:00, 10:00, 10:00 PM, just to create that ambience about this is the way it's happening, it's the 10th Annual Alabama Hip-Hop Week, and this is the place to be. That night, we have a concert at the Soul Kitchen. It's a big concert with artists like Pastor Troy, Dirty Boys, and other artists, just to give a platform so they can perform and promote the culture. And then to wrap it up on Sunday, we're going to wrap it up with a block party, and I know there's Mr. Dave's concern, but I just want to let you know, me personally, I'm all about doing it the right way. So that's why I want to make sure I came in and I just did no random anything. I want to make sure people understand this is for real reasons, a real purpose. So the reason I chose the location that I'm doing it at, because we have done it before at other locations, like on St. Stevens Road, but the guy who owns the business, he supported me throughout the years by giving me the platform to do it, and his space is a new space, he's a new business. I just want to help, help him out because he helped me so many years. That's what it all came down to, so that's why I chose that location to do the, the party. I know the concern is mostly about the language of the music. I work in a radio station. All I do is play clean music. You know, so that's, that's my goal to make sure that, that's done. But pretty much July 10th through 16th, Alabama Hip-Hop Week, you are all invited. You know, if you don't see me, I will definitely come see you. And I want to end saying this right here. I was in the Army stationed in Schofield, Baggs, Hawaii, and I was, I was trying to figure out what I wanted to do once I graduated, so I, I went to the, went to the Army. I was a lab and Bravo. So all we did in the Army was clean weapons and in the field. So while I was thinking about what I wanted to do, I know, I know I wanted to pursue music and be an artist and be an entertainer, didn't know I was going to be on the radio for 15 years, which I've been at BLX for 15 years, but I just wanted to pursue the art. So I say, I want to do it from the house. So I wanted to say, seven years, I have, I have seven albums I released during Hip-Hop Week for 10 years and being at the radio station for 15 years is truly doing it from the house. Thank y'all.
Thank you. We did, in fact, I encouraged you to come to speak about Hip-Hop Week in the city, so thank you for coming and doing that and providing us the information, but also because there's a waiver for the noise ordinance on the agenda that a lot of people are interested in, so thank you for speaking to that as well.
Thank you.
Any questions of the council while Mr. Adams is at the podium regarding the events or the, the noise waiver?
Yes, Madam President.
Mr. Small.
Hey, I would like to say I will, I might have to staming my vote on, on the noise ordinance. It's not because of a bad thing. I am a co-sponsor in this event, so therefore I cannot vote for it, but I do support this 110% because I am help sponsoring the, the event and everything, and I appreciate the work that you had done, Dirty Dan, because I know you asked, because this event started in District Three at Taylor Park. The way to get to younger generation now is through music. This is how you can reach them, and to keep them involved and entertained. And many of our young people, they want attention, and this event here, giving them attention that they want through music. If you don't pay, like I have some dogs, some boxers, I don't pay them no attention, they're going to keep on licking at me until I get them attention. And when I get them a little attention, then they'll settle on down, and it's just like our younger generation, not comparing them to dogs, but that some of them are not receiving attention at home. But during then, not only this event that he's doing for the Hip-Hop Week, he has done other events throughout the year that give our youth, our young men, our young adults some attention throughout the city. And I'm just happy that this is not focusing on just District Three, but you're doing it citywide, and also I appreciate the support of the police department also for going in with this event. Thank you so much for it.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Manzi?
I echo the sentiments of Councilman Small. I am in total support of the efforts of the Alabama Hip-Hop Week. I think that Mr. Adams, Mr. Jones, and everyone associated with this positive initiative, they work all year, not just during this particular week, to try to increase the cultural amenities here in the city of Mobile. I am a listener, I'm a connoisseur, I'm a, I appreciate hip-hop, I listen to it, I think it's a great genre of music outside of gospel. My station just doesn't stay on 900. I do venture over into hip-hop. And so I will be trying my best to attend and trying my best to continue to support positive efforts like what I see being put on by Mr. Adams, Mr. Jones, and everyone associated with this great week.
Madam President. Mr. Small.
They do have hip-
They do have hip-hop gospel out after Manzi.
That's right. All right.
All right, anyone else, Mr. Dave?
If I could, first of all, I would like to thank all of y'all for coming down and speaking to us today. Uh, I'm in a difficult position today, uh, I, I've always been a strong supporter of the arts, and I, I feel that the work you and your organization are doing is good work, uh, I appreciate the effort, excuse me, you're putting into it, uh, supporting artists and the arts. Uh, on the other hand, I've got, uh, I've got people that live across the street from this venue, who've had at least one bad experience, uh, in the fairly recent past with respect to it, and, and it's, uh, it's not just, it's not just the, the lyrics, it's the, the volume of the noise, and, um, you know, once we, the way a noise waiver works, you know, if you kept it at eighty-five decibels, then you wouldn't need a wa- you wouldn't need a request for a waiver of the noise ordinance, and once we grant the wa- the, once we grant the waiver, there's no cap, you can, you know, go as loud as, as you wanna go after that. And, uh, so, I, I, I support what you're doing, I like what you're doing, uh, I'm concerned about the venue you've chosen for this Sunday afternoon.
Mr. Richardson?
I would, I would like to also appear to, um, Mr. Adams, um, regarding the music, you know, be respectful of the neighborhood, but I would also like to say that I have the Braggs Mitchell Mansion in my district. It's inside of a neighborhood. Every weekend, they have performers in the yard, and, and we, we, we in the neighborhoods around there, we know what they're doing up there, we support them, but the idea that you can have a band and can't nobody hear them play, is a misnomer. You gonna hear the band, and you might not even like what they're playing, but as long as y'all are respectful, and don't have it, uh, with, mainly it's bass, mainly it's bass, it's what, what, what the people there, boom, 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 is what they're listening out for. And, uh, having met you, known you, and, uh, I believe that y'all can do what's right. You put your performance on, I was with y'all last year, intended, I might not make them all, but I will attain these functions as many as, as I can. I support y'all one-hundred percent for, for your, for your mission, what you're trying to do, and I think you're gonna be successful, and just know that we are supporting you in your effort.
All right, thank you. Anyone else?
Madam President-
Mr. Small?
Uh, just on one thing, right across the street from where they are proposing to have this Sunday venue is a, um, large grocery store, B&amp;H, with a parking lot, with several other businesses located in there. Right next door is a Tide Shop, and then there's, on the other side of it, is a truck, um, parking lot, so, it's, it's no residence right across the street. And also, I want to remind my colleague, a couple weeks ago, there was a house park on Jemison with two bands, and, uh, what's good for the goose is also good for the gamble. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it, good to see you. Thank you.
I just wanna say one more thing, uh, the gift bags I left, have a little element of everything's happened in Hip-Hop Week. Uh, if you open your bag, like, I just wanna show you a few things, um-
Yeah, thank you, I know, I saw a shirt-
It's just a couple, uh, inside, I just wanna show you.
You know, open one.
We, we have a, we have a, a, a cup, you see it's a clear cup, so, you know, you have a cocktail, there's a water bottle for the kickball game, if you come out, you're gonna be hot out there, and a two-breadth of hygiene. Thank you very much.
Well, because that's what you're doing at one of the parks, is the hygiene, so, that's great.
All right.
Thank you so much for coming, good to see you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay. As, as we mentioned, there is an item on the agenda to provide a waiver of the noise ordinance for, for one of these events, and as Mr. Dave's mentioned, that has created some concern among some of the neighbors, so I know there are some other people who have signed in to speak. Ms. Lambert?
Patty McCarron.
Hi, good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Patty McCarron.
Can you pull the microphone down?
I'm Patty McCarron, I live on twenty-two sixty-four Fairway Drive, I'm about three-hundred yards from the venue that they're proposing, the new spot, I think is how it's pronounced. Um, we had a Mother's Day event happen there, which is a Sunday afternoon, um, and it was, it was just extremely loud, and we could hear profanity, and that was, you know, the noise level and the profanity is what just really disturbed us. We called the police, we made a complaint, it took a while for them to come out, um, I finally went down there and spoke with, uh, the owner of, of the restaurant, they were extremely rude to me, um, told me that they could do whatever they want, and broadcast whenever they wanted to, and they didn't have to have a noise ordinance, and they do this all the time. Um, there were two police officers in uniform that were working the venue, they also told me that I, you know, that this is gonna happen, and, um, so I left. Um, this was probably, at that point, it was about eight-thirty at night, and we'd been listening to it since about three o'clock, started about three o'clock. Um, so that, you know, that was, that's my initial concern, is that I've already experienced an incident here at this, um, location that was extremely disturbing, and it was, you know, called a hip-hop event, and it was Mother's Day, you know, it was, I, I, we were totally caught off guard, we had no idea. Um, my house does not face Fairway Drive, because my house was built in nineteen-twenty, and there was no Fairway Drive when my house was built, so my house faces Halls Mill Road, which, I don't know if you remember this, you may not remember, but there used to be a slogan called, "Get your heiny to the tiny-diny on Highway Ninety," because that was Highway Ninety at that time. There was also, uh, you know, there was a train, uh, Train Depot there, there were several, you know, it was, it was a business section, intersection there, and our house faced Highway Ninety. We, it was a d- former dairy farm, Cessna Place was the dairy farm at that time, and as the town grew out, Cessna Place was developed, and the dairy farm became a residential home, Fairway Drive was put in. Uh, I'm not sure if you're familiar with Fairway Drive, but it is a major cut-through street for people coming from one, from like Dolphin Island Parkway over to Government Boulevard. So, we have a lot of traffic, um, we have a lot of speeders, we've, you know, we've dealt with that, we have a lot of trash, we've dealt with that, we try to keep our side clean, as well as we keep the B&amp;H side, on the adjacent side of the B&amp;H, we keep that clean also, we pick that up, my husband mows it, there's a vacant lot directly from us, we take care of that, as also, we just, you know, we're a neighborhood. Um, Jemison is the next corner down from us, um, if you wanna count lots up from the, from the venue, it would be, there's the seafood market, there's a vacant lot, there's a home, Jemison Street, then there's the Mrs. Ford's House, um, the Nobles' House, and then my house. So, we're right there, right there at the venue, and we hear everything that goes on down there, everything. So, and Cessna Place, it hears everything too. So, um, that's my concern, you know, I, I don't want to hear the noise on a Sunday afternoon, I don't wanna hear it at three o'clock, I don't wanna hear it at eight o'clock, I don't wanna hear it at ten o'clock, I just don't wanna hear it, and it is loud, it was very loud, and I don't, I'm not familiar with decibels or eighty-five and all that, so I don't know how all that works, but whatever the decibels were that day, were just extremely, extremely loud. So, that's my concern, I just, I really don't wanna hear it, I have no objection to the other venues, they seem more appropriate, they're public, you know, public spaces, from what I understand, from what I heard today. Uh, I don't consider this a public space, I consider it a private business, I don't think that's appropriate for the, you know, for the venue. Uh, I know that they, we were told that, uh, according to the noise ordinance, that there will be no alcohol sales from the hip-hop event, but I'm concerned that they have an alcohol license at the restaurant, so will they be allowed to sell alcohol in the restaurant or outside the restaurant during the event? And that concerns me, especially if there's children involved, you know, and we, you know, I just, I, I, that's my concerns, and I, I really don't know what else to say, except thank you for listening, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Since we allow questions of the applicant, are there any questions?
Yes, Madam President.
Uh, Mr. Small?
Uh, what's that, um, Mother's Day weekend, you say?
It was Mother's Day.
Or was it Easter?
Oh, you know what?
It was Easter.
It was Easter, I'm sorry.
It was Easter?
It was Easter, you're right.
Okay, because the applicant did come and apply for a noise order in May, so I don't want it to be confused that this venue, you know, currently have something, so that was Easter, and you said that you constantly hear noise, um, from this facility, how, how often do you hear noise come from this facility?
Um, well, it's not a lot, but it's some, um, maybe every other week, um, one day, one afternoon.
And how many times have you called the, um, police department?
Um, probably four or five times.
On two different, on set, four or five different occasions, or one occasion?
On two different occasions.
Two different occasions?
Yes.
And that was, uh, apparently it was Easter day, and what was the other occasion?
Um, it must've been Mother's Day, 'cause that's what I had in my head.
Okay, all right.
Must've been Mother's Day.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
All right, any other questions of Mrs. Rich?
I think what's important to note, it's really not a question, so, if you're done, but, um, it's my understanding, 'cause we did discuss this at pre-conference, um, that the group that is organizing this event, you know, had nothing to do with the event or the events that you make reference to.
I don't know, I don't know.
Yes, I, I believe that's the truth, so-
Yeah, well, my, my concern is the, uh, is the restaurant, you know, the, the alcohol sales and what they, what they did, and, you know, things may be different with this event, but I just don't think it's an appropriate event, appropriate location-
I understand.
-for a public event like this, you know, that's what, that's what concerns me, and I really don't like the noise, that's all there is to it.
I understand.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, Ms. Lambert?
William Aplin? Aplin, William Aplin?
Council members, my name's William Aplin, I live at Howell and Jemison, so I'm another, maybe hundred yards from the location, um, when they had their event on, uh, Easter Sunday. Uh, it was an incredibly disrespectful event. The profanity-laden music that was broadcast clearly enough for me to hear inside my house while I was watching television was not appropriate. My concern is that it will continue. Having listened to the gentleman from the hip-hop, uh, event, I, I hope that, uh, he just takes into account that that's not an appropriate thing. I think he will look familiar to me, and I know I may have even met you pri- previously, um, uh, I've been in the club and restaurant business in Mobile my entire life, either directly or indirectly, so, um, that, that could've happened at some point, anyway. Um, I, I just wanted to, uh, be assured that an event that occurred there would not be a recurrence of the event that happened on Easter Sunday, and, and I, I feel like I have that, I hope I have that. I, I don't want to have to proceed further with, with issues with this location. Um, my understanding, though, that the owner of the location was incredibly disrespectful personally to Patty, uh, i- if you happen to know him or speak with him, uh, my understanding also is that he has apologized for that occurrence, so, um, yeah, if he can just keep it respectful and keep it to where it's not so loud. Uh, it, it was unbelievably loud, the only, I, I have no way to even gauge the amount of volume that was coming from there, um, but I can maybe put it in perspective in that the wall that is behind you is approximately the size of the speaker wall, which he used to broadcast the music on that day. And I think some of you have gotten recordings that I had actually sent to Mr. Dave's, um, of that from across the street. If we can hear it in the parking lot of B&amp;H, and I can go to my house and not hear it at all, uh, un- unlike Patty, I, I don't have a problem with that. If it's across the street, I, I don't wanna hear it inside my house while I'm watching my television, so that's really my, my statement.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions of the gentleman?
Yes.
While he is, Mr. Manzi?
Uh, I'm in possession of some video from, uh, well, first, let me say that I'm totally sympathetic to what you all are saying. Uh, I represent residents not far from this location. This county is a unique area, and you got three districts kinda in a very close vicinity, so, so I'm totally sympathetic to that, and I don't wanna express that. After saying that, I'm in possession, uh, of some video from a party that was on Jemison, uh, and, and from all indications, this was a very loud musical-type situation. Uh, did, did, were the police called on this particular party?
I don't know, I returned home about nine-thirty that evening after working all day, uh, I actually had been invited to that party, I did not attend, um-
But, but did you happen to-
I didn't hear it till I was there.
Okay.
So, I heard it when I got home, by the time that I got a shower and let my dogs out, it was over, but at, which would've been about, probably, just probably ten o'clock.
Okay.
So, I don't know if anybody else had made any comments.
'Cause I, if the paperwork I'm reading is correct, I believe the event, that Mr. Adams and, and his contingent of sponsors is gonna end at eight that night, uh, and I'd also just say, again, I know this has been said, you know, the, the person sponsoring that event that day has absolutely nothing to do, uh, with the individuals putting forth this effort.
But the owner of the location is the same.
Right.
So, if, if he can temper his events in his location, I, I mean, I, I would appreciate that. I have not spoken with him personally, and I don't know, Patty apparently did that day, and it resulted in him having to apologize to her for his language towards her.
Was a waiver granted on-
Mrs. Rich?
Was a waiver granted on Easter Sunday?
No, there was no application made at all for Easter.
Okay, then-
Um, Jema, she's asking, 'cause we've heard from several different people about a party on Jemison, um, was there a waiver issued?
I don't know that there was an application made for that either, that was a private party of the residents.
Well, they still have to-
That was directly behind me.
You still have to come in for a waiver.
And you did, right.
If you believe the noise will go over a certain decibel, either during the day or in the evening, you have to come to council to get that waiver.
That residence is directly behind me.
But I'm surprised that the incident that happened on Mother's Day, or Easter Sunday, rather, when the police came and could hear the noise, why it wasn't asked to be toned down, especially if they couldn't produce, 'cause you get a certificate or a letter that you're supposed to show when police come, that's the whole idea.
It was, the officers went, they turned it down, when the officers left, it came back up.
I see, okay.
The officers that were on the scene, I don't know if they were City of Mobile Police Officers, I don't know who, who they were, they could've been Richard, they could've been Tikus.
And, and you're saying that they had speakers that were, I mean, you're, made reference to this size.
Yes, I have a photograph, I don't know about it.
No, you don't, that's okay. I wonder if the applicant today can tell us what kind of system they'll be using, because perhaps if it's not quite as significant, that might give you some peace of mind as well.
I, I don't believe the name of the system gonna help us, he's already told us he's gonna keep the music at a level, so the name of his system would not help us.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Go, go ahead, why don't you come back to the podium?
I, I actually heard about the event that happened on Easter Sunday, and, uh, me myself, I, I didn't approve of it either, because at the end of the day, I understand the commu- it's still, it's still about community, you go into this community, and you're gonna have a good time for the people, but you still gotta make sure you keep it respectful and, uh, have an understanding with the neighbors. In the years before, when we did different events, we would go into the community and talk to the different people, so we can make sure they understand what we, what we have going on, and as, if, if, and if people approach stuff like that, you will have, is it this, like, 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 what happened, and, uh, I heard about everything.
I'm sure.
Uh, I'm kinda like the unofficial mayor, unofficial city councilman, so people talking about everything all the time, so, uh, but for me, uh, to you, Alabama Hip-Hop Week, we're gonna be respectful, the music's gonna be clean, and, uh, I wanna invite you over just to, to say hey to me.
All right, man.
Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Adams, appreciate it. Any other, any other questions?
No, thank you.
Madam President.
Thank you all for coming. Mr. Richardson?
I was, just like I said, I think this gonna be, uh, for the good of everybody. A lot of time, the things that we vote on down here is not necessarily about how we feel. For instance, I don't drink, never have, my daddy was dead at forty-nine, alcohol killed Alcohol killed him, and I went the other way. But I've, only on this agenda today, it's going to be, people want to sell alcohol, I'm voting for it, although I don't drink. So I'm saying, we're operating on what the law says. We have to do what, it's not how our residents feel, the citizens, it's what the laws say we can do. We had a similar, this is not the first instance of this nature we've had down here. We had the Comedical Cowboys down here, where they put all sorts of insus on their floats. And people came down here, a groundswell of people came down here complaining that they were insulted about what the Comedical Cowboys had up there. They were insulted over the words that they had up there. So I call for our attorney to give us a ruling. He ruled that under the First Amendment of the U.S. Constitution, people have a freedom of speech and expression, that we couldn't do nothing about the Comedical Cowboys. And I'm saying that the event that's going to take place at, on the, where you're all putting, putting on over there, it's going to be under the First Amendment too. It's under the First Amendment, freedom of expression. It's under the First, my point is, what good for the goose is good for the gander. If we can't shut down the Comedical Cowboys, we can tell you all to tone it down, but in terms of what the law says, it's the same law, the freedom of speech and the freedom of expression. We can't tell them about profanity. It's the freedom of speech. I'm against profanity, I'm a deacon in my church, but I have to obey the law. I have to go along with what the law says. So I'm saying, if to all extent possible, cut the profanity out. But if they hear some profanity, what can we do? Nothing. Freedom of expression. And go buy some of these records, it's already on the records, go get some CDs, it's, you just don't buy it, but it's up there because they go into the U.S. Supreme Court, and the U.S. Supreme Court ruled on freedom of expression, the First Amendment of the U.S. Constitution. I hope everything will go well, and I believe it will, but I'm here to say, it's not that the council have the authority, there is no noise in this community, we can't fix it where you can't hear nothing in your house, there's no law against that. You can't go beyond 85 decibels, and that's a train whistle. That's what 85 decibels is, it's a freight train blowing its horn. You don't need to come and get no permit to make that kind of noise. You want to get a permit where you're going to make unlimited noise, but you can go up to 85 decibels up to 10 o'clock at night. That's what the law says. So that I did, I want to be in my house, I want to watch my TV, and I don't want to hear anything, that sound like up the country, but it sound like to me. So we're going to abide by the law here, we're going to treat all of our communities the same, everybody's going to abide by the law.
All right, anyone else? Mr. Williams?
I think it's appropriate at this point to tell everybody that Mr. Richardson doesn't represent every single person on his council. Although I respect his time, I don't always agree with his definitions and his position. In this case, I'm confident Mr. Baker's going to do the, he's going to do the right thing, so we have a, excuse me, I'm mixing my, Mr. Adams, is going to do the right thing. He's going to do exactly what he said he's going to do, and that's the reason I'm supporting him and will until he gives me a reason not to. And then we are able to exercise discretion with regards to any waiver that comes before us. We do not have a standard in which we have to use to determine whether or not we grant or don't grant. This is an individual vote that we have discretion on. And everyone needs to know that they either act responsibly with regard to our city ordinances and the waivers that we grant, or they won't be granted by this position. I don't think that we're going to have that issue, and we expect to have some police coverage there. I certainly will be by there, and I look forward to the event. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, Ms. Lambert?
Okay, appeals. Request for waiver of the noise ordinance on Donald Street, July 6th, 7th, and 8th, on Charles Street, July 4th, on Canal Street, July 22nd, and July 15th, at Dolphin Street and Jackson Street and Joakim Streets, July 30th, and July 1st, on North Cody Road, July 1st and July 2nd, on Burtonwood Drive.
So move.
Second. Discussion on any of these? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Staying on-
I didn't call it.
Oh, okay.
Those are separate.
Oh, okay.
That's separate.
Well, which one, are you doing, are you abstaining on both of them?
Both of them.
Okay, okay.
So one abstention on-
The one downtown.
The downtown.
You didn't read those digits.
I did, the ones on Dolphin Street.
She read the downtown.
I read the one on Dolphin Street.
She hasn't called them out.
Sorry. She called them down.
Okay. Now read the one by itself.
Okay, and we have a request for waiver of the noise ordinance on July 16th, on Halls Mill Road.
So move.
Second. Discussion?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Davis?
I want to start again by saying, Mr. Adams and your group, I admire what you're doing, I think you're doing great work getting young people involved and getting them interested in music and all the other work you're doing. I admire you for that. And as I also said, this is a very difficult position I'm in today, I can, there are very strong arguments on both sides of the question of whether to grant this waiver of the noise ordinance. I have, I have two concerns with respect, and let me say, I've been here now for three and a half years, and I've consistently, excuse me, supported waivers of the noise ordinance. I can't recall one I've opposed, so I'm not, I'm not opposed to waivers of the noise ordinance in principle. I have two concerns with this one. One is that when, is that I have a concern about this venue that granted is partly a result of what happened back on Easter Sunday, which you folks had absolutely nothing to do with. But I have constituents that live across the street, it's a Sunday afternoon, and I think they're naturally concerned about what might happen on this particular Sunday afternoon we're talking about. The other concern, again, has absolutely nothing to do with you in particular, and that's the nature of this venue in terms of what might happen in the future. We know there was an unauthorized, in terms of they didn't get a waiver of the noise ordinance back, and I'm talking about the owner now. There was, they allowed someone to use that facility back on Easter Sunday without a waiver of the noise ordinance. We had a subsequent application that was withdrawn to use it, and now we have this application. And my concern is that while what we have licensed down there is a restaurant that can serve alcohol, I don't want it to turn into the wharf, I don't want it to turn into a concert venue where every month or every other month, we're having, we're having a request for a waiver of the noise ordinance. Now, Mr. Richardson, who I admire and respect, has tried to draw a parallel between this facility and the Bragg Mitchell Mansion. I can't follow that myself, but we don't routinely provide waivers of the noise ordinance every month or every other month to the same facility. Most of the time, it's a venue that wants to have a Cinco de Mayo celebration, or, I'm talking about commercial properties, not private properties. Cinco de Mayo, or St. Patrick's Day, or something like that, which is fine. So anyway, I have several concerns, and that's going to result in my voting no on this request today. But again, I want to commend you for the work you're doing, has, you know, I just don't like this venue.
All right, thank you. Anyone else?
Madam President.
Mr. Small?
The same application that is before the council on today, is the same application that was redrawn in May. So these are the same application. That particular facility has not submitted an application just for that particular venue itself, for Alabama Hip-Hop Week. So the one that was withdrawn on May, which I had asked the applicant to do, is the same one that is before, is today, so that's only one. And I also encourage my colleague to, you know, you know, look at Jemison, that I don't believe that the council approved a noise waiver for the party that was at Jemison a couple of weeks ago, so, and that is more closer to your residence than versus this particular restaurant slash social bar restaurant that you are speaking of. So Jemison is more closer to your residence. Right across the street from the new spot is B&amp;H, that is commercial and is no residence. Only thing that resides over there, maybe might be some mouse, that's it. Thank you.
All right, Mrs. Rich?
Thank you very much. When commercial abuts residential, there's often stress, and I completely understand the residents' concerns about either ongoing behavior or future. The one that came to their notification by virtue of allowed venue was not approved by the city council, and again, I don't know all the particulars, but police came, they turned it down apparently, it came back up. But we're not talking about this particular application because it is a different venue and a different group making the application. I'm very pleased to know that our police support this activity, and we are trying to engage children just as this event is trying to do, to make events that welcome them, give them outlets that are appropriate, and so I applaud the effort. I, like I said, I normally are very, very sensitive, my office, to residents who have to have their coming and going disrupted by a behavior pattern that doesn't fit their hours and their concerns about their home and their home's value. I'm very glad that the gentleman who is responsible for this activity understands that there are concerns. You should be able to identify him. Hopefully he'll be on site for the event, and if there are concerns or problems, I hope that you will get to know each other on this particular event, and therefore make it an environment that, yes, you have to put up with this for these hours, because a noise ordinance does, waiver does exactly that. Up to 85 decibels, there's no, there's nothing that the city interferes with. Once you get a waiver, you've been approved to go louder. So again, it's identifying everybody involved, a sensitivity on both sides of this, to make this a community event that everyone can be proud of. And so I will be supporting this and making that leap, similar to my colleague from the 4th District who said, just next time, if there are concerns, it'll, I'll probably go into a different position. But this time, because of our city's approval in the activity, I know there'll be eyes on it, and I hope it's very, very successful. I hope you've got parking worked out, because that's another thing that could affect the neighborhood. So again, this is being advertised broadly and hopefully very well supported, so that's all I have to say.
All right, Mr. Richardson?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. I take issue with Councilman Dave, there is a nexus between Bragg Mitchell and 2159 Halls Mill Road, there is a relationship. Both of them had music. Whatever, whatever was going on with that venue, it included music. And on a regular basis, at the Bragg's Mitchell Mansion, they include music. It's outdoor music. And noise is a sound that is displeasing. So if you don't like hip-hop and you hear it, I don't care how low it is, it's going to be noise if it's displeasing. That's what noise is. It's a sound that you don't approve of. Bragg Mitchell Mansion, they got all manner of horns and drums, they get a waiver of the noise ordinance, and they roll on. They're inside of a neighborhood, they're inside of a business district, it's inside a neighborhood on Springfield Avenue, it's a neighborhood in front of them, on the side of them, and behind them. There is a nexus. But we've already heard from Mr. Adams, he says he's going to have the noise under control. So I said, let's roll on, I'm ready to vote.
All right, anybody else? I think we have probably heard more than enough about a waiver of the noise ordinance. This doesn't usually happen, so appreciate you all coming, thank you for coming as well and working with us, and I think you all have a good understanding. So at this point, unless somebody else has something to say, we're ready to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
All right, one abstention and one in opposition.
Public hearing today, it's a public hearing to rezon property at northeast corner of Airport Boulevard and North University Boulevard from R1 and B2 to B2.
This is a public hearing. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to speak to this rezoning application, please come to the podium.
Ron.
Good morning, Ron Bordlam with Penn American Engineers, 1717 Jackson Street, Alexandria, Louisiana. I'm here in support of it, we're the applicant for the project, and here to answer any questions y'all might have about the proposed development or the rezoning.
All right, any questions?
I just have one question. I was not able to attend the, no, wait a minute, I think I might have been there for this one, but it doesn't really matter, because I'd like to hear this publicly, because I think that this is very important. There are no additional curb cuts for this project, correct? To go with what's already been developed for the Publix.
You're correct. All the access will be internal to the Publix park.
I think that's very important for the community to know, because it's such a busy corner.
It is a very busy corner, and we're actually removing a curb cut that's there.
Right, that's been there, exactly. Thank you very much, I appreciate hearing that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you so much, appreciate you coming.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council, we have none. Resolutions held over. 37196, recommend approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a lounge retail liquor class one license to Reflections Ultra Lounge on North Water Street.
Mr. Manzi?
Moved to deny.
Here's a motion to deny, is there a second?
Second, thank you.
Discussion?
Yes, Madam President.
Mr. Manzi?
I just want to make certain that it's clear, that we've attempted, this is maybe the third or fourth time that this item has been on the council agenda, we've attempted to work with the applicant and the neighborhood to come up with an amicable resolution. There's been some issues with prior occupants of this space. The gentleman who was applying for this license was going to go in a different direction, and it's a direction that I support, it's a direction that I believe the community would be in support of as well, if and when all parties could get together and discuss it, so that he could articulate his vision and they could articulate their concerns, then we could move forward progressively. Well, that has not happened, and rather than continue to lay this over, and in light of the fact that I believe his application period was running out, I'm going to ask that we would deny this, then I'll let him know he probably needs to start the process over, and hopefully, once that has happened, this can come back on the agenda.
All right, anyone else? The motion is to deny, all in favor of denying?
Aye.
Opposed? It is denied.
01224 and 21225 authorize agreement for acceptance and processing of source separated recyclables with Emerald Coast Utilities Authority, and authorize contract of am waste for the rental of equipment to collect and transport recyclables. Move to lay over to July 11th.
Second.
All right, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Ordinance is being introduced for the first time, 64024.
That ordinance will live for one week by council rules.
Consent resolutions being introduced for the first time, 03374 through 58365.
Motion to suspend route for media consideration of resolution 03374 through 58365.
Second.
All right, we have one exception, 37361, which will be laid over for one week.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
03374, we reappoint Rufus Hudson to the City of Mobile Citizens Budget and Finance Advisory Committee. Budget and Finance Advisory Committee.
So, move.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, I'll take the next one together.
Okay.
Um, thirty-seven three fifty-nine, three sixty and three sixty-two are recommending approval to the ABC board for issuance of a nonprofit tax exempt license for twenty-seventeen Red, White and Bulls rodeo on North Cody Road and for a restaurant retail, retail license for the bistro at Courtyard Mobile on I sixty-five Service Road South and for retail, restaurant retail license for...
Mexican restaurant.
Taqueria.
Taqueria, uh, Cancun Mexican Restaurant on Airport Boulevard.
So, move.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Fifty-eight three sixty-three, three sixty-four and three sixty-five are declaring weeds noxious and assessing cost for removal of weeds groups fifteen sixty-three, fifteen fifty-four and fifteen twenty-two.
So, move.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
CIP resolutions being introduced for the first time, twenty-one three sixty-six through twenty-one three sixty-eight.
Motion to suspend route for media consideration of resolution, twenty-one three six six and twenty-one three six eight.
Second.
Three-six-seven will live for a week.
All right, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Twenty-one three sixty-six, authorize contract with Barton Associates for Lad People Stadium structural repairs phase one.
So, move.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Twenty-one three sixty-eight, a main contractor Watkins AC Strunk Design for Harmon Park Playground Architectural Design Services.
So, move.
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, Madam President.
Mr. Manzi?
Uh, this will go toward, uh, the design work for what we hope will be the beginning of a first-class playground in the Mayesville community. One that not only the young people in that general vicinity can utilize, but also the students at the George Hall Elementary School. They presently don't have a playground. Uh, we've been working expeditiously to provide that and this will go toward the design work. Uh, I've seen the rendering. It's gonna be something that the citizens in this part, District Two, can really be proud of and we're hopeful, uh, that the actual construction will commence soon. Uh, and I'm appreciative to Ms. Kim Harden and everyone, uh, rela, you know, related to her department and administration, uh, as we move forward with, uh, providing this playground for the citizens in the Mayesville community.
Anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Resolu, resolutions being introduced for the first time, zero-nine three sixty-nine through forty-two three seventy-one.
Uh, that, that last resolution will live for, these resolutions will live for one week by council rules.
Call for public hearings, forty-one three seventy-two. Call for public hearing to consider the application of Derek Tucker doing business as Derek Taxi and Transportation for Taxi Sedan Service scheduled July fifth, forty-one three seven three. Call for public hearing to rezon property at thirty-four fifty Gerby Road, north side of Gerby Road, one hundred and sixty feet east of Hillcrest Road from B one and B three to B one scheduled July eighteenth. So, move.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Announcements? All right, uh, we will start with, uh, Mr. Richardson.
All right, okay. Thank you, Madam President. I want to first talk about, uh, the District One Community Meeting for Trinity Gardens last Thursday, outstanding meeting, uh, in the rain, you know, inclement weather. We still had a great turnout for this event. We had, um, representing feeding the Gulf Coast, uh, Director Kim Lachas, uh, who came to talk about this, um, having food available for children eighteen and under in various locations within the city. We, we've already talked about that today. And, uh, there will be information going out to the centers in District One, uh, further supporting that and to, uh, the churches. Uh, and I had from the city, I had Ms. Kim Harden, she is the, um, Architecture Engineer Director, and she was, uh, there to talk about what was happening in Trinity Gardens Park and what, not only what we've already done at the park, but the new things that's coming to the park and, uh, at Dodge Center. And the people, people were very excited about that. And then, uh, one of the big features is that, well, we had, uh, Nick Amberger to come and talk about closing ditches in Trinity Gardens and, and the new ditches that we're gonna be addressing in the future. And, uh, some people, um, were very disturbed. There was one street, uh, that the citizens, uh, more than one came to talk about Ridgeway. There was a monstrous ditch, large enough for three automobiles to drive through there at one time and that the city had done absolutely nothing to close that ditch and they, they were, they were having to sit on their front porch and look at this ditch and lo and behold, the ditch was, uh, private property, had nothing, uh, to do with the city and it was a responsibility of the property owner, uh, to see about the ditch. And I thought that was big because, uh, the city had been beat down over that ditch. And then we had, um, a team from Gulf Distributing. I notified every resident in Trinity Gardens that this team was coming from Gulf Distributing and they had jobs, uh, in all departments, vacant jobs in all departments at Gulf Distributing. They needed a number of workers and they were willing to leave the plant and come into the community to beg for workers to come and apply. Uh, we didn't have a lot, a lot of applicants there, but the information was passed out hopefully to people who could go and, uh, pass it on to people that could use it. Uh, in case people needed training, we had Dr. Letitia McCain from Bishop State. She's the academic dean, talking about the training that they, they can provide our citizens. And then we had Mr. Nitro Henderson from, uh, our YAS program, Youth Empowered, uh, to succeed, to come and talk about the many jobs that the city, um, made available for our kids this summer. People are still calling me about how their child can get into the program. They started this program before the summer so their children could start work during the summer. It's too late. Summer is here. Those kids are already going to work. So, they're not recruiting anymore. They'll come back next year and try to do the same thing. You can't, when, when we announce these venues, you have to get up and come out and take part in it. And then we had, we were blessed to have Mr. Clay Gordon, the Assistant Police Chief, in the house with us. And then we had the captain, Captain Dirk Palmer, uh, from the third precinct, who made it clear that, uh, it had been, he asked, he asked the citizens of Trinity Gardens, "How long you think it, it has been since we've had, um, residential burglary?" And they went on, "A week and last week to two, three weeks, way over a month." And, uh, he's saying that we, we are under what the criminal crime, uh, crimes that showed last year that the community, we don't want any crime anywhere. But Trinity Garden, according to him, Trinity Garden was doing well. We go from, uh, community, community, I have five communities in District One. I keep it moving, I leave this community and I do the same thing, thing at the next, um, uh, community. And, uh, I want you to know that whenever I come, I will be talking about employment and training. There will be a component there, uh, pertaining to jobs. Someone is gonna be there saying, "Yes, we have vacancies. All you have to do it is apply. If you don't have a good job, it's your own fault because I'm bringing the people inside of the community. You don't have to go." In fact, Gulf Distributing sent their Human Resource Director to the meeting in case someone wanted to apply. The young lady was sitting right there. If it can get any better than that, I don't know what it is. People ask me, "What, what have you done about jobs now? What are you doing? You got to get up and apply. It's what you got to do." Uh, I was riding with, uh, Councilman Manzi the other day. We got off to Interstate, uh, Virginia Street and, uh, they had a big old sign up that "We, uh, we need workers. Please come and apply. It's on the state docks." So, you have to go and apply. Anyway, I'm gonna close out by saying that this coming Saturday, there will be a major rally for trains. It's gonna be at the, uh, Union Passenger Terminal, Terminal in New Orleans where, um, citizens in, in the Gulf states gonna hold a, hold a major rally in New Orleans and we are rallying for the Amtrak train. That's what we are rallying for. We want Amtrak in our city. Uh, so, um, the, the, the National Association of Railroad Passengers and the Union Passenger Terminal in New Orleans are gonna be the sp, sponsors of this event. And we expect hundreds of people to gather there, if not thousands, at the, at the station in New Orleans to rally for the Amtrak train. And they're gonna have people from Washington, uh, listening to us. Uh, people who can make it happen will be in the audience. Uh, I'm happy to, to report that I have been invited to address that rally and I intend to be in New Orleans this coming Saturday to speak up for the Amtrak train coming, uh, to Mobile. And I can give you, uh, a part of what I want to say. That Mobile, I'm not, I got to wrap up. Mobile will not reach its fullest potential as long as, uh, that's, um, as a tourist destination without rail passenger service. I don't care how well we do in our city, we will not reach our full potential without rail passenger service. That the time and destiny for the Amtrak rail service is now. If not now, when? If not us, who? Thank you, Madam President.
All right. Uh, I can't even remember who I called on. Uh, Mr. Small.
Oh, no, I haven't.
Oh, I'm...
But that's okay.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
Carry on.
All right, thank you, Madam President. Uh, this past Saturday, I was, um, privileged enough to go and, um, present a proclamation to, um, Nick Farley, the, uh, defense tackle for the New Orleans Saints. Uh, he had the, um, Nick Farley Football Camp, which is also known as the Lionheart Foundation. Uh, it was the fifth annual one, which was held at the Lad People Stadium on this past Saturday morning. Uh, was plenty of, uh, plenty of youth that was out there trying to, uh, improve and sharpen their skills on football. Again, I'd like to thank, uh, Nick Farley and all of the volunteers that was out on this past Saturday at Lad People Stadium. It was a great event for the community. Also, next Thursday, June the twenty-ninth, at six o'clock PM, will be District Three Community Meeting and will be held at the Fulton Road Baptist Church, eighteen hundred Dolphin on the Parkway. Uh, we invited many, uh, city staffers to come out and also the administration, the police department. Uh, if you have anything that you would like for me to address, please contact my office at CJ dot small, at CityOfMobile dot org, or at two zero eight seven four four one. Again, this meeting will be held on Thursday, June the twenty-ninth at six o'clock PM at the Fulton Road Baptist Church. Uh, letters had hit the mail on yesterday, so all of District Three, your letters, invitations, invites should be in your mailbox. Again, remember that District Three is the place where things are happening. Thank you, Madam President.
All right, Ms. Rich?
Thank you very much. First, I'd like to thank, um, everyone who came out to the district meeting last week at the Connie Hudson Senior Center. We had a very good turnout in spite of the downpour, but then again, we don't let rain interfere too much or we would do nothing around here. So, uh, again, it was, it was a great meeting. I'd like to thank the Public Safety Director, James Barber, Chief of Police, Lawrence Batiste, and our new Fire Chief, Mark Sealy, for coming and addressing the crowd. We also had a lot of good exchange of questions and comments and it was a very good meeting. And I'd like to thank the staff at the Connie Hudson Senior Center who helped, um, facilitate the event. I'd also like to publicly announce a Public Safety Committee meeting that will take place on July eighteenth at two o'clock. Again, that's a Tuesday. We will discuss two topics. They are kind of woven together. One of them is the Citizens Police Advisory Council. And I've asked that the City Clerk's Office please get ahold of all of their members and hopefully, many of them with enough notice will be able to attend so that we can, um, ask the questions that we have in mind and discuss their, um, what they have been doing, how they see the future of that, um, council and also council members' comments or questions. We're also going to talk about police body cameras. Um, all of this came up in last week's meeting and I had pledged to organize a Public Safety meeting once, um, our, um, President told me it was okay to go on and conduct this meeting. And we will talk about the policies and procedures and I'll also request that the, anyone who, um, can give this, um, committee information to be present and of course, citizens are absolutely invited. We will decide the venue for the meeting based on what we're hearing as far as how many people will be present. If it's, um, not going to be extremely large, then we'll have it in our conference room. If we need a bigger venue, I'll ask our, um, City Clerk to please make sure that this room is available for us. And again, this is Tuesday, July eighteenth at two o'clock. And I, I know I've already checked in with the two members with me on this, um, Public Safety Committee, which are Levon Manzi and John Williams, and their attendance is good. And I hope that other council members will also be able to attend as well. But this committee will meet and there'll be a full, uh, group assembled to meet with the community on these topics. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Davis?
Thank you, Madam President. The next District Five Community Meeting will be August Tuesday, August first at six o'clock PM at the St. Pius, the Tenth Catholic Church on Sage Avenue. Uh, this one will have kind of a public safety tilt. Public Safety Director Barber will be with us. Uh, I've also invited the members of the Police Citizens Advisory Council to be with us. This will not be a meeting of the Police Citizens Advisory Council, but they will be there to talk a little bit about what, about their work and, um, so that any citizens who have any questions about the work of the council will be able to get those, uh, questions answered. And I always ask, uh, Public Services Director William Harkins to attend because my experience in our, uh, district meetings has been we generally have a lot of questions having to do with, uh, public services and it's good to have Mr. Harkins there with us. So, again, that's August first, uh, Tuesday, August first, uh, at, uh, St. Pius Tenth Catholic Church, six o'clock PM on Sage Avenue. Uh, Councilman Richardson and I had the opportunity to attend the Boys and Girls Club Youth of the Year Luncheon last week. Uh, I've been attending this luncheon for several years and it really is an inspiring event. Uh, the work that the Boys and Girls Clubs are doing with our youth across our city is really extraordinary. And every year, we have an opportunity to meet really, really impressive, uh, young people who have their, uh, sights clearly set on the direction, they want to take their lives and they're being helped through our Boys and Girls Club. And as, as I said, attendance is always very inspiring. This year was no exception. Thank you, Madam President.
Mr. Williams?
Thank you very much. Um, has it been mentioned that we're gonna be in District Four next week?
A few times.
I don't know if it was an official announcement, but, um, we would do the, um, this is the final meeting of our council meetings in the, uh, community. And I am pleased to, uh, announce that next week's council meeting will be at Burrows Elementary School where, uh, Principal Dr. Nelson will, will host us. And I think everyone will be impressed with the, uh, facilities that now, uh, are there at Burrows Elementary School, serving greater Theodore area or the formerly known place of Theodore, now heart of District Four and the City of Mobile. Brand-new gymnasium, a, a walkway where kids don't have to stand in the, in the rain while they're waiting on their ride of one sort of another and as a courtesy, uh, well, some help from the county where Mr. Carl, uh, improved the road going in there as well as the drainage. So, it's, so a lot of things have happened in that community and I think that, that Burrows Elementary School is just a fine example of what is, what is good in District Four and what's good in the, in the city. So, look forward to being out there. I think the, the time is six-thirty, am I correct?
Six.
Six. Six PM. So, we'll, uh, look forward to having everyone... Six, six PM, so we'll look forward to having everyone there, it's a normal meeting, it is, it is not a public meeting, it is simply a city council meeting in the community, same signup procedures, so if someone wanted to speak to something other than if it's on the agenda, then that would be done by calling in before noon on this Thursday, so that you can speak at that council meeting, I also want to warn all of our citizens, and what they use as a source for what is and what is not, policy or law in our city, and sometimes, it's gonna be a shock to many people on this stage up here, but the media doesn't always get it right, and they have, they've been wrong in several cases here lately, and I would just want everyone to watch where you get your sources of what appear to be facts, first of all, we have a municipal election that is gonna be on August twenty-second, and one of our major medias published another day on that, you can find all of our election information when it's fully developed on our website, you know, we have plenty of time, but it'll be August twenty-second, and last day to sign up for those elections as a candidate, through qualification, is the fourteenth of July.
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth of July, see, you don't even get it from me, it's get it from the clerk, but I just ask that everyone be patient, also, with our police department, recognizing that they're one of the first in this entire United States to put together a policy on body cameras, when they went looking around to see who had a good policy, they didn't find that, and through the leadership of then Chief Barber, and Chief Batiste, they put together one that is a sound policy, but is not written in stone, this will be tried, and it will be modified, and it will see its day in the light, whether or not it's the next Public Safety Meeting, or through the next administration, and the one that follows, we intend to get it right, and I think that we have a great start, again, if people would just be patient, please come to our meeting with an open mind, when we have the Public Safety Meeting, and we'll see where we go from there, but I think it's in a good direction, and I'd like to thank Chief Batiste, and all that are working on it now, thank you, Madam President.
Mr. Manzi.
Yes, Madam President, I want to start by remarking over the great work that's taking place on Anne Street, I know it's a long time coming, the street has earned the Monica Raggedy Anne, because of its condition, it's one that was truly earned, but we are working to make the ride smoother, it's truly a Band-Aid, it's not taking care of all of the issues that Anne Street needs to have taken care of, but it will make the ride smoother, until we are able to secure the eight to nine million dollars necessary to totally rehab the street, I'm watching this process real careful, because I'm hopeful that if it's successful, some of the areas where I have concrete streets, Williams Street, Cherokee Street, Senator Street, those streets, Glenwood, and others, that have been plagued with these raggedy and jagged streets, hopefully, this will be a similar process that we can employ, to make their rides smoother, until we come up with the necessary resources to totally rehab the streets, so I'm appreciative to Nick Amberger, to the mayor, for being willing to try this somewhat unorthodox approach, and as I watched them go down Anne Street, little bit by bit, I see it's successful, and it gives me hope that we'll be able to attack some of these other streets in the upcoming year, a year ago today, I called on this administration, and my colleagues on this council, to create a Department of Youth Services, we didn't create quite a Department of Youth Services, but one of the tenants of that call was for a summer youth employment program, one year ago today, we made that challenge, they accepted the challenge, and now, upwards of seven hundred young people have employment for the summer, one year ago, there was nothing, nothing on the table, no discussion, none of this was even discussed, a year ago later, the challenge was accepted, and now, seven hundred young people, who probably would have not been involved in something positive and progressive, are working, even to the extent that the Oregon Gulf Showers working, I'm proud of that, proud of the administration, proud of Mr. Nitra Bell Henderson, proud of anyone working with this initiative, and I'm hopeful that next year this time is seventeen hundred, and that it continues to grow, and I'm proud of this proactive council, that when the budget was presented, we fought to put the resources in place, so that we could have the expenses needed to fund it, and I am proud of every member of this council who supported this transformative initiative, and I'm hopeful that as we go into this next budget cycle, there's continued support for this initiative, Saturday, we got the Africa Town five K, I'm telling you upfront, I'm not doing one K, two K, or three K, I'm just gonna be okay at the five K, passing out water, so I will be there, but I'm not, don't look for me to cross the bridge, I'm gonna walk across it, I'm gonna drive across it when it's over with, Laura Washam, Mrs. Laura Washam, about four weeks ago, was involved in a serious incident, a young man was just recently captured in Georgia, extradited back here to Mobile, thanks to our fine MPD, Chief Batiste, Public Safety Director Barber, he's where he needs to be, Ms. Washam is still in somewhat critical condition, I'm gonna ask that this community, keep her in your prayers, I get inboxes from people who are connected to her, and they give me periodic updates, you know, I'm not trying to put a business out there, but I am concerned, the community is concerned, and I ask that we will continue to keep her in our thoughts and prayers, lastly, on Friday, myself, Councilman Richardson, President Gregory, Councilman Williams, we all gathered there at Caldwell Field, the corner of MLK and Marmot, as Mobile Gas celebrated the opening of Caldwell Field, it's a seven-acre site that for decades had been deemed contaminated, had been roped off from the community, and they voluntarily submitted themselves to ATM and the federal government's remediation plan, and they remediated that property, and now, it's a seven-acre field intended for the community to enjoy, they have benches, they're gonna have gas lighting around the perimeter of Caldwell Field, and they have already installed a walking trail for the citizens in the MLK area to enjoy, I want to just note that this is the fourth walking trail built in my three and a half years on this council, the fourth walking trail, I think it's the most walking trails in any council district in the City of Mobile, District Two is leading all the way, just wanted to put that out there, and I want to thank Mobile Gas, I want to thank everyone associated with Mobile Gas, for all that they did to bring this to fruition, thank you, Madam President.
Well, thank you, Mr. Manzi, and I see your walking trails, and raise you sidewalks.
Why you get all the tap marks?
Yeah, can't have everything, right, okay, just a few announcements, Mr. Williams reminded us about the off-site meeting coming up, so please remember, next week, we will be at Burrows Elementary at six o'clock, our pre-conference meeting will be here at nine o'clock, as normal, also, July, the July fourth holiday is on a Tuesday, so we will meet the following Wednesday, July fifth, be sure to put that on your calendar, and just a reminder as well, I mentioned this morning in my comments, that movies in the park are throughout the city, June twenty-eighth, we will be at Langen Park, at the Pavilion Site, so come on out and enjoy, movies under the stars at Langen Park, and then also, go out to Lovretta Park for Market in the Park, that runs through July twenty-seventh, from three until six, that's the place to get all your fresh fruits and vegetables, and flowers, and arts and crafts, it's a great location, hopefully, they won't be rained out on Thursday, but there's a good opportunity that they might, just want to let you all know that Governor Ivey announced at ten o'clock this morning, that the state is under an emergency due to this tropical system moving forward, so please just stay tuned to all of the weather alerts, and of course, the city will be putting out some messages as well, to help keep all the citizens safe, with that, are there any other announcements, any other discussion, all right, I think we are adjourned, thank you very much.